Good afternoon. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Welcome everyone to the June 11, 2015, meeting of the City County Planning Board. Would you please stand and join us in a pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Today's meeting is being broadcast live by some TV digital media. It will be rebroadcast at 10:00 a.m. Friday morning, again at 4:00 p.m. Sunday afternoon. Our first order of business today is the consent agenda. These are items with which the petitioner is requesting withdrawal or continuance, or items with which the planning board has recommended approval, or staff has recommended approval, and no one has signed up to speak in opposition. For public hearings today, each side will have a total of 12 minutes. There is no rebuttal period. Once the public hearing is closed and the board has gone into work session, no one will be permitted to speak unless a board member asks a question. For general use district zoning, the board must consider the full range of uses allowed in the district. Therefore, the petitioner may not refer to specific use of the property. For special use district zoning request, however, the petitioner must identify the intended use or uses and give specific details on how the site will be developed. Items under Section B of our agenda require final action by the appropriate elected body, either the city council or the county commissioners. As such, votes taken today are recommendations that go to those bodies for their consideration. If you are addressing the board today, before you begin your remarks, please give us your name, address, and zip code for the record. First order of business is the approval of the minutes of the May 14, 22, and 28 meetings. Are there any additions, corrections to any of those?
No for approval.
Motion by Mr. Malkin, second, Mr. Lamb. Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? That's unanimous. Thank you. Roberts, you presenting the consent agenda today?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. First item on your agenda for the consent agenda is item B1, and this is a proposed rezoning, W.3265. This was continued from your May meeting in order to allow the petitioner to convert his proposed rezoning district from PBS pedestrian business with a site plan to NBL neighborhood business, special use limited. The area plan recommends multifamily for this property. However, it has been historically used as a commercial building, so staff was a little bit concerned about the more intense pedestrian business district on the site. Petitioner has pulled that back to neighborhood business, special use limited. They're aware of the pending text amendment that pertains to neighborhood business, and staff is supportive of the request.
Okay. Is anyone here opposed to this recommendation? Seeing none, declare the public hearing closed.
With approval.
Second motion of Mr. Lamb, second by Mr. Malkin. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous. Thank you.
And this item has been removed from the consent agenda, W.5052. Next item on your consent agenda is item B5. This is UDO 261. This is automatically continued to your July meeting. It's pertaining to parking, stacking, loading regulations, and landscaping tree preservation standards. So that's automatically continued to your July meeting. Next item on your agenda is zoning W.3267, and this is actually a special use permit request for access. The yellow property is undeveloped. That's located on the south side of Old Greensboro Road, and so the request is to go through that property, which is zoned RS9, single-family residential, to access industrial property, limited industrial to the south. So that requires a special use permit. This is actually our first special use permit since we had a text amendment last year. Some of you may remember UDO 251 that came before you, I think in July. And what that did was that was initiated by the city attorney, was to change the review procedure for special use permits. We used to have findings of fact that you used to have to make, much more detailed staff report that was available to you. And so that was really, that burden was put on the city council as far as findings of fact for quasi-judicial hearing. So really, your role here is just to review the site plan for UDO compliance. And so we're aware of any potential ambiguities this cycle for what was in your book, and we're going to definitely address that more clearly on next time around when we have another special use permit request. But really, today is just a matter of looking at the site plan for compliance with UDO requirements, and it's not a public hearing, really similar to a planning board review. So this is the site here. This is the site plan here. Again, the property fronts on the south side of Old Greensboro Road. That red line there is where the current access is. It's called Wildlife Drive. That's a private access road, a gravel road. And so the request is to either continue using that or close that and then relocate it further to the west there, a little bit more in that curve. Either way would require a new driveway permit once they get ready for that use. And they've also agreed to preserve the trees to the right side of that current access, and on the access further to the west, they would preserve those trees on either side because on either side, as you can see, the property is zoned RS9, single-family residential. There was also a sketch plan review of the property to the south a couple of months ago. An NC DOT expressed some concern in regard to visibility for that property in the curve. Moving it to the east, or excuse me, to the west, to the left is a little bit better, and they've agreed to remove some trees along there as a part of getting their NC DOT permit to address safety and visibility issues. So the request, the site plan really is, there's not much to look at in regard to UDO compliance, but it does, they will have to get an NC DOT and city driveway permit, and staff recommends approval.
With approval.
Second.
Motion of Mr. Lamb, second, Mr. Malkin. Any discussion? All of those in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous. Thank you.
Okay. The next item on your agenda was the rezoning case on Silas Creek Parkway and Fair Lawn, W.3266. This was continued also from your May agenda. That public hearing was closed, but there has been some neighborhood discussion between the petitioner and the property owners. We did receive a letter today from Wells Fargo that they are no longer opposed to the proposed rezoning. And we've also received a revised site plan, which you have in your packet. After some of the discussions with the neighbors, the petitioner has agreed there in yellow to provide a six-foot chain link fence between this zoning and the Greencrest neighborhood to the southwest. Just to the left of that fence is, again, a 25-foot planted type III buffer yard and then a 75-foot undisturbed buffer yard. So a total of 100-foot vegetated buffer and then a six-foot chain link fence.
You want to mention the revised condition, too?
Yes, thank you, Paul. In association with that chain link fence, there is a revised condition, number D, or letter D, under other requirements. Developer agrees to construct a fence on the Wells Fargo property connecting to the developer's volunteered fence and the existing Wells Fargo fence, subject to Wells Fargo exclusive approval of the fence, design, height, quality, in terms of an easement agreement. So what that basically says is just, they've agreed that there won't be any gaps in this fence around the Wells Fargo area on the southern part of this property. They already have a fence on their property, so these, the petitioners, are going to bring that fence that they're going to build off-site to connect there. So that's what that condition is in regarding. Now, that does not say that Wells Fargo is going to decide what type of fence is going to be put on the subject property. That is a six-foot chain link fence. I'll be glad to answer any questions about that revised condition.
Any questions of staff at this time? Okay. So we did close the public hearing, but we did say we would give each side a few minutes, three to five minutes, to address anything. Is anyone here from Wells Fargo? I don't believe so. Mr. Stimmel, do you want to summarize the petitioner, and then we'll hear from anybody else who'd like to speak?
I think I'm going to put a drawing up first. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the planning board. I'll be brief in my presentation, but I did want to cover a few things. My address, which I almost forgot, was 601 North Trade Street, Suite 200, Winston-Salem, 27101. Like I said, I'm going to address the key items that were sort of unresolved in the last hearing and touch base on those. I'm not going to reiterate everything that we talked about in terms of all of the positive things with this development that was approved in Sunny Knoll, 1988. But the things I want to touch on is, we just handed out the letter from Wells Fargo, which was one of the big issues. Wells Fargo is not opposed to this rezoning. Jim Site, the developers, met extensively with them in Charlotte and discussed all of the details, and as a result of that, facts that were all laid out and all of the detailed analysis, they are not opposed to this rezoning. So I think that was one of the key questions that the board had. The second thing I want to touch base on is we continue to reach out to the Greencrest neighborhood, as we mentioned in the last hearing. A brief history on that, we met April 8 with the neighborhood. We had a drop-in session. We had a second meeting, a very cordial meeting, with Jim Clayton, who is the property owner nearest this corner over here, right here, and his mother-in-law, who were concerned about the security issues. And I'll touch base on that in a minute. And then there were some people that were here at the hearing, and they were saying they didn't get a letter, they didn't get a notice. So we went above and beyond. We went door-to-door. There's 19, I believe 19 homes on Greencrest and the adjacent road, I think it's called Fern Cliff. We went door-to-door, handed out flyers to have another meeting. Out of that meeting, we had eight out of 19 of the homeowners on that road attend the meeting. We had a good discussion with them. In that meeting, I think one of the key concerns was security and fencing. So in addition to the 500 feet of volunteer fencing we agreed to put in for security, they were concerned that people could just walk around the fence. So if you look at the red line here, that represents roughly 500 feet of fence. We contacted Wells Fargo and have received favorable agreement to work out this fence and continue it and tie into their fence, which goes even further down the line adjacent to these neighbors. So it's continuous, security-wise, it's something that the neighborhood asked us in this meeting, and so with some work with Wells Fargo, we were able to work that out as well. And I think that was pretty significant. I don't think we can answer nor resolve all of the questions or problems that the neighborhood and Greencrest might have, but we've certainly gone above and beyond to try to do so. In closing, I just want to talk about the summary items and highlight them. One, the planning staff recommends approval for this development. This development was approved in 1988 for a mixed-use project. It's been known that the entire Sunny Knoll tract would be a much more intense development than single-family residential since 1988. Our proposal is approximately 154,000 square feet less retail, six-plus acres less retail than what's already approved, less impervious, less traffic. The access points have been worked out with DOT engineering for safe access onto and off of the property. That's all been worked out. This is one of the largest buffers I'm aware of, adjacent to a retail project in Winston-Salem. I don't know if it's the largest, but it's a significant one at 100 feet and 75 feet of that undisturbed. We're doing enhanced street yards and architecture on the front to make it a nice decorative project. The developers volunteered the 500 feet of fence, plus additional fence, working that out with an easement with Wells Fargo. And the landowner has tried, like I mentioned in the other one, 27 years to get office on this southern tract at this location here, and nobody's interested in that. So I think we've done everything we can at this point in time to try to answer as many of the questions as we can and be sympathetic to the neighbors' concerns, and we've tried to address as many of those as we can. I'll be happy to answer questions at the appropriate time. Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Could I ask you a question?
Yeah, sure.
Mr. Stimmel?
Mr. Stimmel, could I ask you a question?
Sure.
One of our goals in legacy is to have walkability, and this is certainly one of those areas where we have a lot of residential that's surrounded. Things that you've built in there that might encourage that?
Sure. And I may have to have Luke in my office help me out, but we met with planning, they had some concerns. There's a walk that's here currently. We're going to connect that and tie it down to Silas Creek at this location. We're also doing a sidewalk on this side that all connects down, I believe, to the end of the street here as well. So there's sidewalks on the streets that are walkable in that area. We met with DOT and city staff, and they felt that crossing at this point in time was not something that we were going to do, that they asked for. So we provided and agreed to whatever they wanted in terms of walkability, but the walkability goes back and forth this direction. And of course, this neighborhood, Greencrest, does not want any walkability to the development. So it was addressed by staff, had some concerns, DOT. We had to go back and forth with DOT on whether we could put it on Silas Creek Parkway and whether it would work within the right-of-way and the steep grades that fall off, et cetera. So there was a lot of discussion on how to put those in and where it made sense to go, and that's what we agreed with staff to do at their recommendation.
If I could ask one other question?
Sure.
The plantings that go around this sheet, I guess it's more than a gas station, right? Describe some of how that's going to look. Usually, you know, a lot of those go right up to the road, and how much space is it going to be and what kind of plantings?
Okay. All along this area on the front, for example, this is where the convenience store will be located, is, we agreed to do brick columns that stretch from approximately here, back around the corner on the site plan, you can see them. So they're decorative brick columns with landscaping in front of them that it meets the street yard requirements. We've also agreed to do double the amount of shrubs all along here to create a double row of hedge to hide and conceal any cars that are parked there. And that's consistent on all sides, on all properties, all three tracks, all two tracks the way it's written.
And so the elevation of them will be enough to?
The elevation is enough so that the cars will be concealed once the shrubs have grown a little bit. In addition, we'll have hardwood trees, two per 100 feet as well in there. So we've added additional landscaping, additional brick columns and enhancements at this intersection along the front of this, and in the future, there'll be similar treatment on that track when it moves forward.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Stimmel. We have a spokesperson here for the Greencrest neighborhood. Come forward and give us your name, address for the record, please, sir.
My name is Randall Reese. My address is 755 Bethania Rural Hall Road in Rural Hall. I'm representing my mother-in-law. She lives at 2661 Greencrest, has lived there since 1963. We did have a meeting, Polo Park, with the petitioner and went over a lot of items, a lot of the concerns that we had as a neighborhood, or they did. I was there, and then had a discussion later on with the neighborhood in general. And basically, the neighborhood's position is, there is zoning clearly in place since 1988, addresses every issue that these people or the petitioner has requested, and they are not in favor of making this change as consensus within the neighborhood. It was discussed with most of the homeowners there. They are not in favor of doing this. I've had some extensive talks myself currently with the petitioner and the developer, and understand the concerns there, but this is pretty much being driven by the fact that this tract over here, which is totally incorrectly numbered. I don't know where tracks 1, 2, and 3 are in Sunny Knoll. The tracks in question are actually 4, 5, and 8. And this was brought up at the planning board meeting because there was confusion over what was 1, what was 2. It was labeled one way, it was labeled another. So personally, I would request for the neighborhood that you disallow without prejudice and have this, if they wish to continue with this process, have them resubmit this, but with the proper track numbers. Sunny Knoll, the track numbers for these positions in question right here are 4, 5, and 8. This doesn't mention 4, 5, and 8 on here at all. 1, 2, 3. This is not correct. And the site plan that's been in effect since 1988, my understanding is it carries the weight of law. So we need to have the correct numbers put in place. If they want to resubmit, I would say, you deny this today without prejudice, they can resubmit this with correct track numbers and start the process anew. And then we can see what we're doing. So the neighborhood is not in favor of this, and basically, one of the sticking points is the erroneous numbering of all of these tracks, which are not in compliance with what Sunny Knoll had originally posted.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
All right. Any board members have any questions of anyone? Comments? Discussion?
Is it time for us to have?
Time for us to take? Yeah.
Chair, if I could just add in one thing, just to be very clear. In the staff report materials in your book, there is a site plan, and that site plan labels the tracks both according to how they are labeled for this particular case, as well as how they were labeled back in 1988. And I think the issue that the staff had when we were trying to put this together is that Sunny Knoll, as it has been developed, has been split up into different tracks. Different portions of tracks that were labeled in certain ways got developed in different portions and different increments. So it gets more confusing if you keep some of the other tracks. I realize some of these are labeled the same. So what we decided to do is to label them as we did last month, but also put there for track 1, to label it former track 8; for track 3, to label it former track 5; for track 2, former track 5; for track 1, former track 4. So we tried to do that. Keep in mind, this is a totally new zoning case, okay? So when someone is proposing a new zoning case, you label the tracks that are located there. I understand what the residents are saying about the original labeling, and that zoning is law until or unless it's changed, but the point is, the petitioner has proposed to change. And so we needed to label these tracks since this is what you're looking at in sort of a sequential order.
Thank you, Paul.
There are a couple of things in terms of looking at this, and I appreciate Duck Stimmel talking in terms of walkability, and I don't know that we have DOT here. But, I mean, Fair Lawn, if we're going to have something on the north and on the south of it, it just seems to me that if we're going to have walkability, we've got to get across that somehow. And I don't know what we can do here in terms of recommending that back to DOT to say, "Take a look at this," and say, "Figure out how people can get around without having to get in a car every time and drive just, you know, across the street from north here to where you're going." The other thing that is interesting about what DOT is saying here is, from a planning aspect, do we want Silas Creek to turn into North Point Boulevard in terms of all the entrances and egresses and things like that? I mean, I've certainly heard about the flow of traffic on Silas Creek, and people are getting ready, I mean, when they get on this section of Silas Creek, they're ready to move. They're moving on down, and the stoplight does stop them there. But I don't know how to work that out, but what I'm foreseeing with this move is that we're going to turn this sector into essentially what's going on in North Point, which is basically coming in and out all the time, and maybe the need for additional lanes and other things like that along the way with that. So it is concerning me that we haven't or haven't addressed those, or don't have a way to address those at this point.
Yeah, and I have some other concerns that are sort of related. I share those. I do appreciate the petitioner's attention to design and trying to make this as attractive as possible, and I think it is about as attractive as it could get. But I just think that there are some very significant issues here. One is, the neighborhood, I think, is going to bear a lot of impact from this type of development. It's much more intense than the office use that is currently zoned here. And there was, in a sense, an agreement, a community compromise back in the 80s when the Sunny Knoll case was discussed, that was of interest to a lot of people, that drew a lot of attention, and resulted in an agreement, not one that carries the force of law, but an agreement in the sense as to how this area would be developed. And I think that should be respected unless there are significant conditions that change the situation. I don't see that those conditions, that there are any. I think the gas station will, and the drive-through restaurant in particular, both of those things are very impactful to the neighbors behind them. With the pollution coming from the gas station, with people going back around the restaurant all the time, constant streaming of cars, noise issues with garbage, that's heavy impact to the neighborhood. Another area of concern I have has to do with the area plan. The area plan recommends office on this side of Silas Creek and mixed use on the other side, and I think that's appropriate. I think it's appropriate because when the area plan was developed, there was a concern about concentrating all the commercial development at the activity center at Fair Lawn and Reynolda. What this would do is significantly change that. It would start moving the commercial development down towards Silas Creek. And that would, in a sense, to me, create two activity centers, and that leads to kind of a sprawling commercial pattern that we have come to regret on Haynes Mall Boulevard. And that's the kind of thing that I would hate to see this kind of snowball into. And then the third concern I have has to do with the driveway cuts on the Silas Creek Parkway, which were already mentioned, because this road was intended to be controlled access. It serves very well to move the traffic. It's a very important mover of traffic in the city from north to south, and I think that as we start intensifying commercial development here and drawing traffic and putting in driveway cuts, that's going to really substantially change the character of this road and its ability to move traffic. So for all these reasons, I just think there are too many problems in this situation.
Thank you.
I do have a question about the car counts, especially since you just mentioned that. The car counts, I was thinking in the first presentation, if it were developed under the formally-approved site plan at the rezoning hearing in 1988, we had, was it something like, was it set?
My actual question is, are the car counts larger now than what we could have had with what was approved and agreed to by the community in 1988?
Well, what we have from the TIS that was submitted, the proposed use has significantly decreased the calculated number of trips from the existing approved uses of 13,372 trips per day to 9,700 trips per day. That's for the subject property. I'm not sure if that takes into account the entire area of Sunny Knoll.
But the subject property could have had some number of hundreds of thousands of square feet of office in it. Was it 200 or 300?
Well, there, on the east side of Silas Creek Parkway, which are now tracks 3 and 2, a portion of that was zoned for GBS that would have allowed up to 250,000 square feet of retail. The northern portion of that was downzoned about, I guess, two years ago for the Liberty Healthcare Retirement Healthcare Retirement Facility. So, that kind of chewed into that commercial zoning. And now, this largely does away with that commercial zoning. Now, it does have, I think, in Track 3, a potential for 20,000 square feet of retail on that, and potential for one-drive through, with the drive-through being, being screened, but which, that's substantially less than the 250,000 that was originally approved on the east side of Silas Creek Parkway. Where they're proposing the convenience store now, that whole track there, the southern track there, was zoned in 2001 for a four-story retail building of 75,000 square feet. And the northern portion remained two-phase. There was no, nothing ever really fleshed out about that. So, it's a comparable acreage. I'd say you could probably get that much on that property as well of office development or multifamily. So, it's several hypothetical different comparisons, but on, on the average, it looks like it's a significant reduction in potential traffic generation.
Well, that's the way I was understanding it, but I wanted to make sure about that. I wanted to make sure.
Yeah, I, I agree with you that it is a decrease in overall car trips. My concern is where, is with the driveway cuts and the access onto Silas Creek. I mean, when I, I asked last month if the pre, the original, what's already allowed, what's already zoned, allow, that proposal was for cuts onto Silas Creek and was told that that was not the case. So, this would be a change.
Connie, can you address the curb cuts for us? I see you were in a meeting at the same time.
Yes, the, the curb cuts that are being proposed on Silas Creek Parkway will come as a break in the control of access that runs along Silas Creek Parkway. NC DOT has already approved the Sheets curb cut. And I don't believe the other one has been submitted yet, has it? That's right? Okay. So, the second access at the grocery store has not been submitted to NC DOT at this point. But it will have to go before their board for the break in controlled access.
But those would not be full access, they'd be right in, right out?
That is correct.
And there won't be a, an acceleration ramp, or I don't know what the right, a turn lane? There won't be anything like that required for, from the developer?
The, the developer is going to be required to make some improvements.
Oh, they are.
On Silas Creek Parkway, they will have to have a turn lane into their site.
Okay.
That will be separated from the right turn lane going, turning onto Fair Lawn Drive.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
That, that is to address safety issues.
Thank you.
All the cuts will be made on the Fair Lawn.
No, there's, there's two cuts on Silas Creek Parkway, but they're right in, right out.
And you got turn lanes.
With the turn lane.
Yes, and there are also proposed improvements that are planned for Fair Lawn Drive as well that will require the installation of a median island from the traffic signal back to the first driveway north of this, on the northern portion and the southern portion of the site in front of Sheets. And so, the full access driveway will be near Fair Lawn Court on the, the far western.
Can you point out the location and length of medians on that drawing, please?
So, the median, the median will start here? And it will go past the, this driveway here and here to this point? And the full access will be at Fair Lawn Court here?
And now, are there any possibilities of getting crosswalks and whatnot on Fair Lawn?
Yes, we, Transportation has asked for sidewalks along Fair Lawn Drive on both sides of the street so that we can get pedestrian connectivity. And we asked for those sidewalks to be extended to Silas Creek Parkway so that there's the potential to cross, to, to connect to the tracks on the eastern side when they develop. And any request, any modifications in the traffic control for the signal would have to be approved by NC DOT and, during the design phase. And so, if that's something that's desired, then that, it's ultimately up to the discretion of NC DOT and, and looking at how they do the design in the future.
Well, we could request that, they take a look at that.
Yes.
I, I might have not heard you right, but I thought you were also asking, would there be a crosswalk at Fair Lawn Court?
Across, right.
At Fair Lawn Court?
Yes, at that light.
Well, Fair Lawn Court is not proposed to have a traffic signal. So, we do not recommend mid-block crossings. That's not to say that it won't happen, but we don't want to give a false sense of security for crosswalks that happen at uncontrolled intersections.
So, more likely at Fair Lawn and Silas Creek?
That's correct.
Where the light is.
Yes. And then up at Reynolda.
You mean Reynolda and, and Silas Creek would be the two places to cross that?
Fair Lawn and Silas Creek.
Yeah, Fair Lawn, but on the, on the west side of that, though, would, would be all the way back to Reynolda?
Yes.
If, if in the future, a signal was warranted there, at that point, pedestrian crosswalks and things could be installed, correct?
That's correct. Yes, and, and there are, there are times and ways that mid-block crossings can be installed. But with the width of this and the speeds on, on Fair Lawn Drive, we would want to take a close look at it, just to make sure that we're doing, that we're keeping pedestrian safety in mind.
Thank you.
Well, I would move approval, and it would also be dependent upon accepting the additional improvements that the petitioner has volunteered.
With the site plan amendment and the new condition?
Yeah, the fence being lengthened and tied into the Wells Fargo fence so that we've got that barrier, that thousand-foot-plus barrier of the neighborhood.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Motion, Mr. Lamb, second, Mr. Mulligan. Any discussion?
Well, I, the only reason, the reason that I second it was, I think that what's, if I understand it correctly, what's being proposed here, I mean, and what it's on for now, would do the same thing as far as the in and out and everything, would, it would really be, it'd be worse, it would leave more traffic or whatever. So, I think, and, and the developer has gone over and beyond, I think, the call of duty, which I appreciate. But I feel like that what's being proposed here is the best, the best thing that, that could come forward at this time. Like I said, if, if you go in and put office complexes or multifamily or whatever, you're going to have more traffic, you have more protection trying to get across the highway, maybe, I mean. So, so that's the reason, I, I mean, I second.
Any other discussion? We have a motion for approval. All in favor? Opposed? Three opposed, passes 5-3. Thank you.
All right. Next item on your agenda is zoning docket F-1552. The petitioner is WW Joint Ventures. And the site is 0.74 acre, located on the east side of Thomasville Road, north of Gumtree Road. And the request, until very recently, was to rezone the property from RS-20 to Highway Business Special Use Limited. As you saw in your agenda book, staff was concerned about that intense zoning on that property. I'll show you the location map right here. It's just right down on the county line. You have Cornerstone Baptist Church, just, just directly to the northwest of the yellow property, which is a subject property. Convenience store located directly to the south there at the intersection of Gumtree and Thomasville Road. And the subject property is zoned RS-20. So, the proposal was to rezone that to Highway Business Special Use Limited with all the low-intensity commercial uses, but with the addition of restaurant with drive-through. So, staff, talk with the petitioner, let them know that we would not, we're not going to be supportive of that request. And so, today, they've actually filed a revised application and are asking for a one-month continuance to convert this to a LBL, Limited Business Special Use Request. They've agreed to maintain the condition that there be no access to Highway 109. They've got an easement now currently through the Sheets parking lot. That's where they would continue to access the property. And they've also agreed to remove the use of restaurant with drive-through, which is the most intense use that we were very concerned about. And again, take this down a notch, if you will, to the LB district as opposed to the Highway Business District. So, rather than go through the detailed presentation for the Highway Business Request, which is really no longer, they do want to ask for continuance to convert it to Limited Business.
Is anyone here opposed to the continuance? So, you're none, then what's with this, the board?
Good, we continue. Second.
Motion, Mr. Lamb, second, Mr. Mulligan, continue. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed, as you now. Thank you.
Thank you. Next item on your agenda, let me just scoot through these right quick, is F-1553. Petitioners, Buell and Vicky Barker and BBJ Building Incorporated. And the request is for a site that's 11.87 acres, located on the east side of Peters Creek Parkway, across from Haversham Park Drive. And the request is for a special use rezoning to add the use of transmission tower. This is Legacy's Growth Management Plan. It's located within the suburban neighborhoods, Growth Management Area 3, along Peters Creek Parkway, which is a, a growth corridor. And this is the subject property shown here in yellow. It's currently heavily wooded and undeveloped. Again, located on the east side of Peters Creek Parkway, just south of, of Leek Creek, of course, northern portion of the property, butts Leek Creek, and some of that is within the floodplain of Leek Creek. And across Leek Creek, you have a Parkside East, a detached single-family home development there. Parkside West, on the other side of Peters Creek Parkway. And this is just north of the Oliver's Crossing Shopping Center located to the, to the southwest of this property. This site has dual zoning, and the reason it's before you, from a rezoning standpoint, is it has special use zoning on both the northern portion, which is RM8S, shown as open space for the Parkside East. And then the southern portion is zone GBS, general business. The very southernmost portion of that has been developed with a O'Reilly Auto Park Store and a Bojangles Store. But this northern portion has, has remained undeveloped. So, those two special use zoning cases do not have the use of transmission tower. So, that's why it's before you in this manner. You may remember last year, we had several text amendments dealing with transmission towers. And we, it resulted in some slightly different regulations for the county as opposed to the city of Winston-Salem. Generally, what that amendment process did was open up more residential areas to shorter, smaller, less intrusive, non-lattice-type towers. And that's what's being proposed here. This is 150-foot monopole tower. Generally, in the city, that was allowed, but with a special use permit for more transmission towers in residential districts, a special use permit that goes to the elected body. In the county, which is where this case is, although it's adjacent to some Winston-Salem zoning, the same, but with a special use permit granted by the zoning board of adjustment. So, that's some of the main differences there. Also, a, but because this is a special use zoning case, they need to add the use of transmission tower, it's not going to go to the zoning board of adjustment. It's a, a rezoning legislative decision to add that use. Two of the other differences is there's not a neighborhood meeting that is required. If the special use permit was required to go to the zoning board of adjustment, they did have to have a meeting. But they don't have to have a meeting for this, as they would in the city. They did have a meeting, they volunteered to have that on the volunteer fire department down. I think there's a summary in, in your staff report in regard to that. And also, in county cases, there's no photo simulation required. So, that's just a brief kind of summary of, of some of the text amendments regarding transmission towers. So, that's the location map. I'll move on to some, this is aerial photograph here, before I get on to some on-site images showing the development pattern. Again, the site is heavily wooded. There, in the purple, purple circle is shown where the proposed tower would go. That's the highest point on the site. And again, they're proposing a 150-foot-tall monopole. The area plan shows the subject property reflective of the current zoning. The red southern portion, again, is zone GBS. The intermediate density, light brown or medium brown is, is shown, that's currently zoned RM8S. Up to 12 units per acre is what the proposed area plan recommends. This is looking into the site there, across Peters Creek Parkway. Looking south on Peters Creek Parkway, the subject property's to the left. Looking north on Peters Creek Parkway, subject property's to the right. And looking across Peters Creek there into the Haversham Park Drive, I believe, that's the entrance there. And that's approximately across the street from where the entrance would go into this, this tower. Within the Parkside East Development, further to the north, just off Peters Creek Parkway, this is looking back south towards the subject property there. You see the high point of the property. That's approximately where the, the tower would be located. Site plan, really pretty simple site plan. Minimum access, 20 feet in width, going up that slope to serve the property there. In the center, you see the Transmission Tower compound. They're showing a, I believe it's a type 3 buffer yard immediately around that tower site. Also, one of the ordinance requirements, when towers are in residential properties, they have to preserve the tree save area equivalent to the height of the tower. So, they've got a diameter around that property of 150 feet that they would have to save, record an easement, a lease agreement there, it's recorded in the registered D's before they can get their building permit or construction permit. Also, the second little concentric circle around there is for an additional 20-foot setback, so they have, have to have 170 feet from the tower to any residential buildings, which they're certainly in, in compliance with that. So, the site plan is, is pretty, pretty straightforward. This is a previously approved commercial site plan, a little bit different orientation there with the north arrow going to the right. But that yellow circle shows the general area where the proposed tower would, would be located on that, that knoll there. So, the commercial uses would still remain in place, but if they did want to develop that part of the property for commercial purposes, they would have to come back in for a site plan amendment. Analysis is, the proposed monopole transmission tower would have some visual impact on the surrounding properties. But again, at 150 feet, it is lower than many other towers. The request will allow improved cell service in the general area. And from a traffic standpoint, really, the, the impacts are negligible. So, staff's recommendation is for approval, and the site plan does meet UDA requirements. We're glad to answer any questions.
Any questions of staff, just, yes?
Yeah. It was my understanding that in the county ordinance, towers on vacant residential lots have to be concealed towers?
I would need to double-check. I believe that's correct.
And this is proposed as a monopole with three additional co-location positions. By monopole, are they talking about the external antennae?
Yes. Look, just, just briefly, there's three main types of towers. You have the, the taller lattice towers, they can be 400, 500, 600 feet tall. Those are structural, you can see the structure, similar to an electric transmission tower. Then you have the, the monopole, which is this, I think they can be up to 199 feet. That's a single pole, but at the top, it does have the antenna structures there that, that are visible. Then you have the concealed towers. And those can be either in a, say, a church steeple, they can be a mono pine disguised as, as a tree, or they can be what's called a slick stick, a unipole, which it's a smaller diameter pole, and you cannot see the antenna around it. So, that's the three main categories, and this is a monopole, so you would see the antenna structure.
Yeah, I just remember when this ordinance was originally considered, that I believe that the version that was adopted by the county doesn't allow that kind of pole.
2-5.79 Transmission Towers for the County says, "Monopole towers with exposed antenna with a height of up to 180 feet in the IP or residential districts shall be approved through the Board of Adjustment Special Use Permit Process." But there's another provision in the ordinance that if you are going through a special use district rezoning process, you don't have to do the special use permit process. But the ordinance does allow monopole with exposed antenna to be located in residential rezoned property. rezoned property.
Okay. Then I guess I had a misunderstanding.
Mr. Trump, you did mention in your staff report that you had ruled out a monopine. What was the thinking behind staff in terms of what style of antenna or pole you were looking at?
Well, I don't know if we said that we'd ruled that out. They had initially requested or presented a monopine. Staff doesn't really have a preference, I don't believe, but they then converted that to a monopole.
Right. And let me just, I have witnessed and had to deal with these kinds of structures, monopine, faux pine, in other jurisdictions, and I've seen examples of them. And I really think, since they do tend to be sticking up a good bit higher than the natural trees, it looks pretty clear in a lot of cases that that's not a natural structure. So, I think it's open to debate whether those things are really an attribute to an area or whether they actually are a bigger visual distraction because you have the fake branches, and it's obviously taller than what you would expect. So, I think that's one reason why you have public input, and could be that people in a neighborhood might really prefer that, and if the petitioner's willing to go with a monopine and the decision-making body is interested in doing that, they can do that. But I don't know that it should be automatically assumed that a monopine is preferable to a monopole.
I think one of the factors in that was what kind of vegetation is around that knoll, and you said that hadn't been determined at the time that this was written. Did you, I know I went on the site visit. There were some pines. I don't know what the concentration of pines, and of course, we didn't go up to the place, but have you determined what it is?
Well, this is another difference between the city and the county. In the city, you have to have a predominance over 50% of evergreens to do a monopine.
Right.
In the county, it can go either deciduous or monopine. So, that, because it can go either way, and they actually decided not to propose a monopine, it's not been determined, the extent of vegetation. Now, you know, going back a little bit, you can see on the aerial, which is taken before summer time, that there's a pretty good bit of evergreens on the right, kind of near the circle, but the northern portion towards Leek Creek looks like it's more deciduous. All this area down in here, that's obviously evergreens, a little bit of evergreen area here, and then the northern portion looks like it's deciduous. But that's really kind of only an ordinance requirement in the city.
Any questions? Now, let's go ahead and do the public hearing. There might be some more questions when we get through with this. Brian Pierce signed up as a proponent.
Brian Pierce, 701 Green Valley Road, Suite 100, Greensboro. I'm here on behalf of the applicant. This was our tower application, and I think it's been covered pretty much what we're intending to do here, just a couple notes and things that were touched on. The, as you see, the tower is actually going to straddle the two property lines, as was discussed, while there's two different zonings here. One option that the applicant had, but didn't pursue, because, and I think this gets to the tree point, they could have just gone ahead and rezoned it all GB, and if I believe I'm correct, that would have meant by doing that, they wouldn't have had to preserve the tree save area. But by handling it the way we have, that tree save area is going to stay, which will provide that additional buffer for sight and visuals on it. And I think, look through the photos, as you see, I mean, looking down the road, there's just a large line of trees. This is a very wooded area, so those trees are going to stay in place, so that buffer's going to be there to protect any visual aspect to it. As to the type of tower, I sort of would echo Mr. Norby's comments about monopoles sometimes actually being of preference in the vision. The other type of tower, the slick stick, isn't a preference because with a slick stick, you can only get one antenna. So, if you start putting slick sticks out there, what you're going to get is you're going to get more towers. With this design, you're going to have three antennas on it, so there's ability for two other providers to co-locate on the tower. And when we looked, we did this morning, actually, did a search of the registry to see if there were any other towers in place where this antenna provider here could be co-located, and we looked at a half a mile and a mile, and we've turned this into the city as well, and no towers were found. And that's the typical search radius for towers when you're constructing it, because that's kind of where we are on what kind of coverage you get. I'm happy to answer any other questions, but again, would point to the fact here to respond to any comments that anyone else has who's speaking in opposition. But it's a wooded area. There's a good distance between where this tower's going into the area of the north that's residential, so it's not in anybody's backyard. I think this is a good site for it, and I hope you'll recommend approval.
Thank you.
Quick question. You mentioned that, I'm glad it's not in anybody's backyard. How far away is it from the nearest resident?
It's Gary Dean.
Got that in the staff report.
As you can see from this photo, that where the point is, it's a good distance.
Well, the tree save area is 150 feet.
Yeah.
And that's...
Let's see.
Closest house is across Peters Creek Parkway, and maybe I did not put that in the report, but... It's about 400, 500 feet, I believe.
And looking to the north, it looks to me that it's at least 500 feet to the property line, and I don't even believe there's residential lots right at the property line.
It's about 500 feet.
Thank you. Any other questions of Mr. Pierce?
Yeah. How many, in Winston-Salem or Forsyth County, how many slick poles have you put up?
I haven't been involved in any.
You haven't been involved in any?
And I've, I've seen one proposed in Guilford County. It's just, they're not, there's the issue of, you know, everyone wants to limit the number of towers that are there. I know you don't want them to see, but there's a big difference between a slick pole that only has one antenna and a pole that has three, because there's so many different providers out there.
Yeah. So, you've never heard of a slick pole that had more than one transmission in it?
I've asked that question to engineers, and I don't know that it's possible.
Okay. Now, in a monopine, could you do three transmissions as well?
Yeah, it is the same.
Okay.
And looking, I was not involved with this at the earlier stages. I was under the impression that we were asked to change it, but that may not be correct. I can say from my client's perspective, they usually prefer monopoles for the reasons that Mr. Norby stated, but they're usually not adverse to doing monopines if it's requested.
Okay. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Pierce.
So, I have one question. So, the three-to-one ratio is about right, because that's something that we tried to get out of the presenters a year and a half ago, is what density of slicks will we need compared to density of monopoles? And it seems like we never could get that question answered. About three-to-one?
I am not an engineer, but I've been, I'll tell you, I've been told that there's only one, and that makes sense, because if you think about what's going, it's just a straight-up pole.
And the other thing we understood, I think, is the additional height also gives you a little additional coverage as well.
It certainly does.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else like to speak in support of this? If not, we'll turn to the opposition. Owen Hill? You'd like your wife, son, if you're going to speak ahead of her?
We both think the same way, so I'll let my wife do the talking, okay?
You're a smart man. Okay?
Elaine Hill, 4093 East Side Court, Winston-Salem. And I'm here on behalf of the Parkside East residents. They have expressed their concern about the cell tower, and one of their main concerns is if it's ever hit by lightning, there are, there's a lot of trees back there, and we feel that the cell tower is just a little bit too close to the residential area. The way it's set up, there's not a lot of distance between Peters Creek and our development. There is a creek behind it, but it just seems like it's very close. And we also are concerned about the rezoning. If they were to put more commercial buildings there, again, it's just too close to the residential area. And as far as the, no one has expressed to me that they're having any problems with transmission. As far as, I know in our development, everybody's pretty happy with the transmission. They're getting on their phones, the reception. So, I don't know how much the tower is needed, but our main concerns are it being so close to the residential area. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else like to speak in opposition? Send no, no, we declared the public hearing closed.
Could the staff point out where she lives in relationship to that? Trying to figure out what that neighborhood is.
I think we can see East Side Court. I think as soon as he gets with her to find out which lot, he can point it out.
Oh, so east side, it would be north of Leek Creek?
Yes.
Actually in Winston-Salem?
Yes. So, as I'm, I'm just doing an eyeball estimate, but the southernmost lot on East Side Court appears to be, could be anywhere between 600 and 800 feet away.
She said that her house was located in this area right here.
Okay.
Yeah.
And petitioner, I believe, has a comment about the lightning.
If I may, very briefly, there's a lightning rod on top of every tower, so I think that suffices to quell any issues with respect to the tower getting struck by lightning.
Could I ask one more question of the opposition or whatever, the Owens? Did either of you attend the meeting at Griffith Fire Department?
Yes.
Could you give me a brief summary of what occurred there at that meeting? And you'll need to come up to the mic for that, but...
Brief summary, it was just basically telling us where it's going to be located and how far, how many feet it's going to be from the nearest house, which is probably 500 feet to the nearest house, but we're fortunate to be farthest one away from the zone there, and half of it goes through the center of my house, the zone. So, unfortunately, I'm quite a ways away, but I'm here on behalf of everybody in Parkside East that shouldn't be this way. This is the lesser of the evils, I think, you know, the tower maybe, but commercial property, that would be, and other things, that'd be a little less, you know, but I'm against it. Any else?
Yes. Did you have any discussion about which type of transmission tower? Were you presented the different types?
Yes.
And did you have any conclusions on that?
They told us the two types that they proposed. Well, one was, after you have to, the types that there's two...
Monopine and monopole.
Yeah. And the two types they proposed to do, and they didn't make the decision that either one of them they were going to use, you know, I'm not sure.
So, there wasn't a neighborhood preference?
No, exactly, no. No, no, but just, we're getting close. It's, try to do things the right way.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Wishes of the board.
You know, I think that this is an excellent reason why we have a city-county planning board, because if you get the lay of the land going into this and you come down Peters Creek, really, the impact of this sitting up on that knoll is to the city residents, like these folks who have come here today. So, I think it behooves us to think when we're making a decision on this, how's it going to look as you're coming on Peters Creek, going south and heading out, because there are a whole lot of residents that will see what that looks like. And having studied this a whole lot, and particularly the various UDOs that came through on this, and the alternatives, I am not very impressed with the multiple transmissions that end up on a unipole. I also have reservations about faux pines or whatever you're going to call it along the way, but the one at Clemmons doesn't bother me too much. The one at Cary doesn't bother me too much, and it's interesting. Some people notice it, some people don't. And if there's a way to hide all that electrical and still get good cell service, which we all depend on right here, I think that that's a way that we ought to go, and we ought to encourage that simply because we've got so many residents that will be seeing that from their backyards when they're having picnics and other things like that down in that area, not to mention traveling back and forth. I actually would like the slick stick better, but if they need those additional transmission, I think hiding it somehow in some brush or faux or whatever makes more sense. I wish there was a faux oak, by the way.
That's right.
Anyone care to make a motion on this?
I'll move approval.
I'll second it.
Motion, Mr. Lamb, second. Mr. Mulligan, any discussion?
Yes.
Yeah. I really do think that in this case, this should be a slick stick rather than a monopole. This is a unique case because they're asking for rezoning. It's not going through the regular quasi-judicial process, so this is property that, right now, doesn't have the right for a cell tower. And the way I look at it is, sometimes when you're granting that additional use, that someone is requesting, it makes sense to ask them to do something a little over, above and beyond what they would normally be required to do. And in this case, giving the residents something that's a little more attractive, I think, makes sense. I understand the argument about the trade-off between the co-location issue with the slick stick versus the monopole, and that concerns me as well, but I think that we at least ought to experiment with the slick sticks, see how they work, because otherwise, we're not ever going to get them, and the process that we have now, we're never going to get them. When this ordinance was first proposed to the community, it was sold on the basis of we can accommodate cell towers in neighborhoods because we can do slick sticks. We can conceal the towers. And that's not what the reality came to be when the ordinance finally went through all the process of development. So, I just think that in this case, we should be requiring a slick stick just to see how that works.
You have comments?
No. My question to you, how would that be, I mean, how would that be done as far as you'd like to see how the slick stick would work?
In other words, is this a considerable advantage in terms of its appearance? It's hard for us to say that now when we don't have any examples in the community.
I do think they look better. I mean, that's personal preferences, like some folks, you know, slick sticks versus the monopoles, but if it takes three, I mean, that's the trade-off. the monopoles, but if it takes three, I mean, that's the trade-off, if it actually does take, and we don't know yet.
We don't.
Because we can't get an answer. But if it takes three, if we've got to approve three slicks for every one, you know, it may even make sense at some point, say, if these transmission structure things can do what twenty slicks can do, then maybe we just find the right sites for, you know, putting up these transmission tower, you know, terrible-looking things.
Put them up a little bit higher, put four, five sticks.
Right, right. Put them up.
That'll do away with so many poles.
But we did go through a long, drawn-out process, and, you know, we've got what we've got, so, anyway, that's it.
Any further discussion? We have a motion for approval. All in favor? Opposed? Three opposed.
Okay, passes five, three.
Good afternoon. UDO 262 is a text amendment. The petitioner, of course, is Planning and Development Services staff, and the request is to amend regulations for the Neighborhood Business District, also known as NB District. Some background information, the low-intensity commercial land use has been discussed in all of our area plans, as well as was an agenda item in the Legacy 2030. It is intended to preserve character of nearby established neighborhoods and accommodate a number of uses, which includes office, retail, personal services, and household needs. The low-intensity commercial use was most recently identified for Washington Park Activity Center, which is the Acadia Street corridor, and a nearby large parcel of land in the South Central Area Plan update in 2014. And a number of other neighborhoods in the city and county could also benefit from such a low-commercial zoning district. Analysis, despite being used and discussed in all of our area plans, the low-intensity land use is not currently aligned with an existing zoning district, and so we have looked at them all and found the Neighborhood Business District to be the most similar to the low-intensity commercial use. The NB District is not intended to cater to motorists or to attract customers from outside the neighborhood. The NB District is presently lightly utilized and highly dispersed throughout the county. The existing NB District has a number of restrictions, which limits its usefulness and leads us to the need to revise it. Regulations for the proposed NB District include off-street parking, being located to the rear or side of principal structures, limiting building square footage to 5,000 square feet per floor. You could have, request higher, but you would have to go through special use district zoning as requested. Screening mechanical equipment, as well as enclosing trash facilities. And then we have a number of signage limitations, which includes limiting you to one freestanding sign, which would have a height of four feet and an area of twenty square feet, as well as providing attached signage, which includes awnings, projecting, or wall signs with a maximum area of five percent of a building wall on street-facing facades of a structure. Prohibited uses in GMA's growth management areas one, two, and three would include motor vehicle repair and maintenance, convenience stores, gasoline sales, as well as retail stores specializing in automobile supply. These are a number of uses which the citizens are against, as well as other prohibited uses, which would be prohibited in all growth management areas, would include car washes, boarding or rooming houses, drive-through restaurants, and clubs or lodges. Design enhancements, which we have included for the NB District, these are those that are required in growth management areas one, two, and three. At least one principal building entrance oriented to the street on one or more street-facing facades. At least one entrance per one hundred feet of linear street frontage for the structure. At least fifty percent transparency, including windows, doors, and openings on non-residential structures, and pedestrian-oriented architectural features, such as facade articulation, windows, awnings, and other similar features, which we would review. In summary, staff believes that the proposed amendment will encourage smart development of mixed uses, while protecting the integrity and residential character of neighborhoods. And we've done outreach with a number of public groups, including commercial realtors, the Neighborhood Alliance, and neighborhood associations to gain their input, and we've received support from a number of them with this UDO 262. And so, staff's recommendation is for approval. Any questions?
Questions of staff?
Is there height, is there story restriction, as long as you keep the 5,000 square foot limit on the floor? Can you go three stories? Can you go five stories?
Well, the height limitation in the district is forty feet, so that's, for the most part, a maximum of three stories for most structures.
Thank you.
This is a public hearing. Anyone like to speak in support of this? Anyone like to speak in opposition? Now, I'll declare the public hearing closed.
And you've got to have the fifty percent transparency, even in GMA three?
Yes.
Yeah. For non-residential structure.
But keeping in mind, this is a pretty unique district that is designed to be very neighborhood and pedestrian-friendly and.
Yep, I'll move approval.
Second.
Motion, Mr. Lamb, second. By Mr. Younger, discussion?
Well, I do think that this is a good step, and it's good that the staff was responsive to some of the neighborhood concerns that've come up, and I appreciate Washington Park writing in a letter and expressing their approval of this. There are some wonderful things in this, in terms of how this fits into a neighborhood. From my experience in some other cities with these type of zonings, sometimes it's unrealistic. When you have a good restaurant that ends up in being in one of these areas, you're going to get people from outside the neighborhood. You've got to figure out parking, you've got to do that, but I think we'll stumble through that, and we'll come up with good ways, and we'll put up with it because people want to go there. But that's just part of being in a neighborhood, and if you've got the right kind of convenience there, even if you can walk to it, other people want to come to it, even if they live in the next county. So I think we'll make it through. So I like it in general, and I like the process that the city used to get the different inputs on it. I think that was healthy.
Any other, just comments, and board members have a motion for approval? All in favor? Any opposed, that's unanimous. Thank you. Okay. No staff report today?
No staff report.
Okay, we're going to need to go into closed session. Before we do, does any board member have anything to go to the order before we go in? Will we adjourn our meeting from the closed session? We don't need to come back?
Yes, maybe incorporating in your motion the fact that the board will adjourn immediately upon the closed session being ended.
Well, I move that the city-county planning board move to a closed session pursuant to General Statutes 168 through 168, and General Statutes 143 through 318.11, A1 and A6 regarding the confidential personnel matter, annual evaluation of Director of Planning. Because there is no further business to be conducted after the closed session, this meeting will be adjourned upon the conclusion of the closed session.
Is there a second? Second, Mr. Bryan, any discussion? All in favor? We're in a closed session. Thank you.
And what we're going to do is walk right out of here, turn to the right, and down.